Good afternoon, colleagues. Ymina Trentai-Sinko, the Lesley Turenguahean, is back from recess. And at this time, I'll go ahead and acknowledge Senator Joe Sinagustin. You are acknowledged. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move to -- I ask to move to the second reading?
Senator Sinagustin, can we please add the notwithstanding provision on the motion, please?
That's correct. Notwithstanding the standing rules that we moved to the second reading, and then I have a bill I'm going to introduce to move to third reading.
Yes.
You want me to go ahead and state that?
No, no, no. I'll do the first motion. On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Sinagustin, I will still recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place 298-35 into the third reading. I'd like to discuss the bill. And if you'd like, I will address specifically the bill.
Yes, sir, but can you just, for the record, read the bill number?
All right.
What committee, the authors, and the title?
Thank you. Bill 298-35, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime, Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response, is an act amend, Section 77704, Section 77705, and 77706, and 77710, all of Chapter 77, Title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to the rehabilitation improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park, and is sponsored or authored by myself and co-sponsored by yourself, Madam Speaker, and Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Jose Pito-Trelle, Senator Jim Moylan, and Senator William Castle.
So, Senator, can you also note that that's a COR and not an LS?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. I apologize. COR.
Okay. On that motion, please proceed, Senators Joe Sinagustin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 298-35 was COR, but was brought to us by the very innovative and dedicated individuals from the Harmon Industrial Park Association, or HIPAA. Public Law 33-191 establishes a public-private partnership with HIPAA, allowing for the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park area. This area was created many decades ago to help build the local economy and is in part responsible for where Guam is today. The law allows private entities to invest up to $4 million in lieu of tax credits, which would be spread out over a five-year period. This would fulfill two objectives. First, that our government coffers would not be impacted tremendously, and second, that it would improve deplorable road conditions in the industrial park area. In 2019, HIPAA broke ground, and with creativity and careful cost-cutting measures, they began to improve the road infrastructure in the park. Today, we see the fruits of their austerity and the main road beautifully improved. Bill 298 will allow the remaining credits authorized to be utilized in improving the secondary roads that have already seen better days. HIPAA has already contributed $3 million in the current improvements and look forward for approval to expand the remaining $1 million to improve the roads not identified in the approved A and E. Working with the committee and HIPAA, we address the concerns that HIPAA would be entitled to cover to credit of taxes excluding tobacco taxes pledged to the Healthy Futures Funds and remove that exclusion. This would ensure we do not jeopardize the tax collective from tobacco products going to the Healthy Futures Fund. This will provide a great benefit and value to the community. I look forward to the discussion on this bill and ask my colleagues for their support in improving landmark in Guam's economic history. Isurus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinagustin. On the main motion, is there anyone wishing to speak? I know there's an amendment. Senator Theresa, are you ready? You are recognized.
Yeah, they're going to be replacing that amendment with another one, but I can begin on the bill, Madam Speaker. So, on the bill, yes, I rise in support of this bill, and I wanted -- this bill goes back to 2016, when Public Law 33-191 was passed to allow businesses to claim $1 million in BPT tax credit, or business privileged tax credits, and $3 million in tax credits in use, it said, use excise taxes, if a business contributes to the rehab and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park roadway over a four-year period. And in Public Law 34-10 in 2017, the time period was extended to use the tax credits by one year, which allowed for more rehabilitation on that industrial park roadway. And as the sponsor has indicated, we have all seen the great improvements on the roads in the last couple of years, and I want to thank the Department of Public Works and the Harmon Industrial Parkway Association for their work in rehabilitating these roads that were in dire need for many years, in fact. So this bill will clarify the term "use excise taxes" to simply "excise taxes," because "use excise tax," we were told, was not found in the statutes, and therefore businesses were not able to claim those tax credits with that terminology in the statute. It also, the bill also added a provision that would allow for additional streets to be rehabilitated in the Harmon Industrial Park with the same amount, which were not identified for repairs in the original law, as long as the Department of Public Works approves the plan and the total cost of such additional repairs remain within the cap and timelines of the tax credits. And so I want to thank the author, because at the public hearing, we discussed the original version of the bill, which has been changed in this amended version, and I'm grateful because we've preserved what might have been -- we've preserved the Healthy Futures Fund intact without allowing any tax credits to come out of the Healthy Futures Fund, the alcohol or tobacco taxes. And that was when the law was originally passed. I remember that then-Speaker Cruz was very, very adamant that we were going to protect the Healthy Futures Fund from being tapped into for those purposes. And so they did amend the bill, and the amended version now specifies, it keeps that exception of the Healthy Futures Fund, so the Healthy Futures Fund remains intact. It's not used for this tax credit. There was another amendment made in the amended version, however, that I would like to discuss. Maybe it just needs some clarification. So the amended version of the bill removes some of the annual cap restrictions to allow for flexibility for the businesses to claim tax credit on excise taxes over the five-year But the other amendment is that the total cumulative amount of tax credit was changed from $3 million to $4 million for excise tax credits. I don't think this was the original ten of the bill, and it was definitely not discussed at the public hearing, and so it may just be, yeah, we just need to finesse this, because it was not also in the original version of the bill. So the change increases the total amount allowed by $1 million. If we look at, let me see the bill. If you look at the intent, the findings and intent of the bill, it correctly states that the total is $4 million. That was all, that was from the original bill. It was always intended to be a total of $4 million, $1 million from business privilege tax, $3 million from excise, what they said, use excise tax back then. So we were supposed to correct that from use excise tax to $3 million from just excise tax. But if you look at page three of the bill, section three, it changes the total from $3 to $4 million. And I know it says the cumulative total, however, this section is only talking about excise taxes, because there's another section of the law that talks about business privilege taxes that we're not amending here. So that remained $1 million, and this was only, this provision of the statute, 7705, only takes care of the excise tax, which is supposed to be $3 million. In fact, they hadn't, they hadn't used any of it because of the language that they said they were not allowed, but not only that, that they anticipated that they would have enough revenue, so they wanted to expand the program to include other roads with the same cap. That was made very clear. So I just think it's, you know, if the author could consider, this is, I just think maybe, well, anyways, that's my amendment. It would be to allow the change from use excise tax to just excise tax, but not allow changing the $3 to $4 million, because I don't think that was anticipated in the original bill or the public hearing. But it keeps the total, $4 million. So we're not impacting at all their ability to use the money that they are intending to use, and even to expand their program to include side roads that they said they still had extra credits left that they could expand to those other roads, that I guess it came in under what they expected. So, and I think it's just, I just don't think that we should put the words cumulative total in this section, 7705, that's talking only about the excise taxes, and in the last sentence of 7705A also, it says the combined total should not exceed $4 million, but this section is only about excise taxes. So the combined total is in another section of the law that we're not touching here. The BPT, $1 million, is in another section of the law that we're not touching here. So we're only touching this part, we only want to change the word "use excise" to "excise" in this section and not touch the total there. It should still say $3 million. So that's, I hope, my second version of the amendment. It's been uploaded now, so that should be correct. So what it does, sorry, Madam Speaker, I'll get to the point.
Would you like?
On page three, line 10, just restores it from four in the bill to three in the original law, and it does that in the last sentence as well.
Right, so we are, we are looking at section 77705, right?
Yes, yes, in section three of the bill.
Cap on excise tax credits.
Correct.
And delete two. Did you, but you had a point of information. Did you still want the author to clarify, or did you just want to proceed with the amendment?
Oh, well, sure, if he wants to, but no, I think, yeah, we can debate the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, we'll take it on the amendment. Does everybody have a copy? Anybody wishing to speak on the amendment? So cap on, delete the word "use," and then from $4 million to $3 million.
Yes, and I added the word "excise."
Right.
To make it very, we're only talking about excise here. We still have another million in another part of the law that's, so it's a total of four. We're not touching that.
On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Sinagustin, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In reference to her amendment, let me make it very clear that during the public hearing, the folks that were impacted were very specific. The author of the amendment asked specifically for certain amendments. It's there. It's there on the bill. The use tax, I mean, let me go back to the bill itself that's being introduced, okay? If you go to the bill, not looking at the amendment, the word on section three, let me just stand by. You look at section two, we took out the word "use," strike. We made sure her concerns were the tobacco tax, the Healthy Futures Fund, strike, we took care of that. As we go along, on section three, we strike the "use." It's on the bill. So there's no change. Now, all we did was we wanted to make sure, because the folks that are involved in this construction, they identified that there was $1 million left. And if we want to talk about the original bill, if you look at the legislature's finding, it always started at $4 million. Now we're making the changes because we wanted to make the changes, because they wanted to use up their remaining $1 million. They found that there are other areas that they need to fix up, and it would be to the benefit of the industry. And then as we move along, you look at the bill, it says, remember, section three is talking about the use tax, the combined total tax credits on line 919 of page three. I understand where the author's coming from, but if you look at section thirty, correction, section three, it's very specific to 77705, cap on excess tax. I don't know how much more you need to write into the bill to keep repeating the same thing, that that's what the subject's about. So as I move along, I would object to any amendment. Stick with the $4 million. The industry can use that $1 million in credit, and they can move on, and they can finish off the projects they have. And like I mentioned in my opening, is that it's to benefit the industry. It doesn't impact anybody. It takes care of them. It takes care of their industry, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Sinagustin. Anybody else on the Theresa Trelle amendment? Do I have any other speakers? If not, Senator Sabina, I will recognize you at this time.
Just a point of inquiry to the author of the bill, so.
Please state your question.
Yeah, so I guess the process of tax credits, those have to be dealt with prior to any appropriations. Is that correct to the author of the bill?
Can you say that one more time? I could barely hear you, Senator. I'm so sorry. The author couldn't hear it either. Can you restate the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, just the question is regarding tax breaks, so, it's now too loud. Regarding tax breaks, when we're dealing with appropriations, do the tax credits come first? So does it diminish the amount that we appropriate when it comes time for budget? If the author of the bill can clarify that.
Senator Sinagustin, would you like to use?
Yes, Madam Speaker. For my colleagues, when the budget is put together, all tax breaks, any anticipated breaks, any QC's, we work with GITA, we work with the administration, and any of the breaks that do exist is put into the package, and then we come up with the appropriation. So yes, everything is upfront first. So in anticipation that there could be $1 million in taxes removed, that's taken into account, and then we move from there. Then that's when we identify the appropriation. So the question is, are these numbers considered? Yes, they are. So in the future, if we in this body pass any breaks, the next budget cycle will take that into account for the future movement or the impact today.
Isurus Massey, Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sabina, does that suffice?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Theresa Trelle amendment? Anyone else? If not, Senator Theresa, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with all due respect, again, the original law set a cap for $4 million. The bill as introduced did not affect the cap at all. We had a public hearing never once talking about the cap. In fact, we talked about, there was, they still had credits available to them, and so they wanted authority to expand it to other roads, not to increase the cap overall. So that's why I just think it's a technical error, but this technical error will cost us another $1 million in tax credits that no one has formally asked for, nor did the fiscal note refer to. The fiscal note talks this, about this bill as having no fiscal impact, because we didn't affect that $4 million in taxes, which as the appropriations chair correctly states, we've accounted for the $4 million total in taxes in our budgetary plans, but we did not account for a total of $5 million, which, what this technical change does, it changes the overall total from four to five. And that's why I'm saying it wasn't, it's a material change in the bill. I just think we just need to correct it here, and that the parties who are engaged in this are very much, well, from the public hearing, they seemed very much satisfied with the total cap, and they just wanted the words "use" changed. They wanted, you know, to be able to expand it to some side roads, and all of those, I think, are excellent. That makes the bill, the bill overall is good, except for this change that came out of the committee, and I did raise this with the committee prior to, you know, this getting finally reported out. So I'm just hoping we can just make that change. Again, it's only on the excise portion. The whole law still states a total of $4 million, but it should only be $3 million from excise taxes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Theresa. There has been an objection to the Senator Theresa amendment. All those in favor of the amendment being proffered, please signify by raising your Motion fails. Senator Theresa, you still have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I hate to raise this point, but that makes this bill significantly materially different than what we had a public hearing on, which was not an increase in the amount of tax credits, but just change in what it could be used for, or which taxes it could come out of. Very significant. Not only that, Madam Speaker, we have no fiscal note on it. And now I'm raising these concerns, which I don't think we need to raise in this bill. It's a good bill otherwise, but I don't, I think that's, if that's the intent, I mean, if that's what we're going to do here, then it seems an underhanded way to do it, that we're going to do it without putting that out in public, that we're changing the cap, we're raising the cap. And I thought that the people who were engaged in the public hearing, when I raised my concerns about how Speaker Cruz tried so hard to protect the Healthy Futures Fund, they were very much amenable to that. They were the ones who came back and said, "We agree. We don't want to touch the Healthy Futures Fund." So they, they agreed with the, going back to the original language. I am just confused, and I would object that the bill's materially different, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Theresa. Anyone else on the main motion?
Madam Speaker, I'm raising a point of order. The bill's materially different, and I don't want to do this, because this normally, it's, it should be a good bill.
Senator Theresa, if you're pointing out a bill that's materially different, you're going to either ask for a motion to refer it back to committee or ask for a legal opinion. So if you're objecting to the bill.
I think.
You can state it. You can state you're objecting to the bill, and I can go on and ask our other colleagues to speak on the main motion.
Madam Speaker.
So tell me what your desire is. You said you were done, and you're objecting, so I just want to ask, you still have the floor? You may proceed.
Yes, well, I'm raising it as a point of order, Madam Speaker, for you, I think. I think the rule is that you make a ruling on it.
I will take a moment's recess and get a legal's opinion on the ruling. Senator Torres, do you have a point of information, or would you like to speak?
Yeah, I do. I just, in listening to the debate, what I want to note is, the area that the amendment is being proffered, in that same section, the itemization of the amounts of credits, the total caps that can be taken per year were deleted. And if, unless I'm wrong, and I could be, if you do, if you add up the numbers as it is itemized here for the total cap authorized per years, for example, what was stricken out is the first, two, three, and fourth years, no more than $750,000 shall be authorized for the year, and then it goes on to the fifth and final year. So in my quick math of this, I believe that those numbers amount to $3 million. So to the proffer of the amendment's point, it, the bill, the law as it sits really only accounts for $3 million. So I agree with her that we've now pegged an extra million, and that point needs to be clear, because I believe she is correct. If you add up the itemization of how much is authorized for the five years, it adds up to $3 million. It doesn't add up to four. So, I mean, that's my point. I just wanted to point out that.
Duly noted, Senator Torres. I will take a moment's recess. Ymina Trentai-Sinku, the Leslatour in Guam, is back from recess. You know what? For the point of information, Senator Joseph Augustine, I'm going to go ahead and recognize you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to withdraw my objection to the amendment after meeting with legal. And I did speak to the author of the amendment. I'm in support of her amendment.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. So Senator Chalai, can I ask you to move for reconsideration, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author of the bill. I would like to move for reconsideration of my amendment, my earlier amendment.
Thank you. On the motion to reconsider Senator Therese Chalai's amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none?
Madam Speaker, first, we need to address her point of order. If that can be withdrawn, then we can go back to that amendment. Thank you.
I do apologize. On the motion to reconsider...
I would withdraw my point of order, Madam Speaker, my earlier point of order, and renew the motion to reconsider, please.
On the, thank you, on the motion to withdraw and reconsider, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Therese, restate the amendment, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's on page three, section three of the bill. It would restore the amount to $3 million instead of $4 million for excise taxes. And that's on line 10, and it would also do the same for line 19. It would change from $4 to $3 million and add the word "excise tax."
Sijus Massey, are there any objections to this amendment? Hearing or seeing no objections? Motion carries. Senator...
If I could just conclude real briefly. I just want to say again, it's a good bill. It's really, you know, I was not convinced until I saw it, and it really was a successful program, and we've seen it. And so it's a very good example now of public-private partnerships where the private companies are able to put in their cash or their equity to get the projects done, where the government has not made that the number-one priority for road projects, for example. So I just want to thank again to the sponsor of the bill for his work on this bill. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Senator Therese Chalai. On the main motion, I understand Senator Will Castro, who's sitting in the galley, he would like to speak. On the main motion, Senator Will, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the bill, I rise in support of the measure relative to the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park. Based on the committee report, I'd like to highlight the context as to how the bill impacts the community. But before I do that, I can recall in the 34th Guam Legislature, I also co-sponsored the preceding bill, or the predecessor bill, to this one, and I voted for it also in the 34th, and I intend to do the same in the 35th. As the previous speaker noted, this is an excellent example of a public-private partnership to make improvements to the public roads for the benefit of all concerned. The roadway in question is traversed by a significant amount of commercial vehicles. It's utilized by, at least what's stated in the committee report through testimony, utilized by at least 4,000 employees, where approximately 40 business entities are located and operating. Much of the credit goes to the Harmon Industrial Park Association, whose efforts go back to 2016, when the public-private partnership was proposed. I do want to summarize, at least in terms of my reading of the report and participation in discussions, that there are two major benefits that come out of this initiative. First, it's really refreshing to see these participating companies manage and ensure that the project, at least the initial phases of the project, was completed on time and on budget. I understand that this was achieved in one or more phases of the project. And I have to admire and commend them publicly for their efforts, because it's a fine example of what happens when entities are fully vested in a project such as this one, when they take ownership and apply all of their in-house expertise, when they are willing to sit around the table and cooperate to deliver forth a product that's of a high-quality outcome. I could see it, you know, I could see easily why they would do that. They're direct beneficiaries, right? One or more of those businesses stated on the record that they've been around for the last 50 years and have every intention to be around for the next 50. But the second, and for me at least, the second outstanding benefit of this measure is that it benefits the general public. We could see how these improvements mitigate damages to personally-owned vehicles. We can also see, especially for those drivers who struggle at night, or in heavy rains, or when there's floodwater buildup, we could see how these improved road conditions make it easier for them to traverse the very same piece of property that they couldn't or had trouble with years prior. So I want to thank you. I want to thank the prime sponsor. I want to thank the HIPAA. Thank you, Chairman Sinagastin, for allowing me to engage with you on this measure and to make the necessary adjustments. My gratitude also goes out to those private sector partners who took the initiative and put themselves forward to make this a reality, a continuing reality. Mr. Shimizu McDowell, Mr. Kaai, the testimony folks like Mr. Ilau, Ms. Liangaro, Mr. Butler, former Senator Simon Sanchez. And if I left any others out, I do apologize if I referenced your statistic or used portions of your testimony. But again, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the privilege to participate on this important public-private initiative. Thank you.
Bueno, meto, Senator Castro. So on the main motion, if no one else wishes to speak, Senator Sinagastin, on the closing.
No closing, other than, oh, just to continue, ask my colleagues to support this bill and request that this motion, that the bill moves to the voting file.
On that motion to move Bill 298-35 to the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Right now, colleagues, we are on Bill 369-35COR, as introduced by Mary Camacho Torres. Senator Torres, I will recognize you at this time.
Just, as amended, right? As amended?
I move to place into the third reading file Bill Number 369-35COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. This is an act to add a new Article 10 to Chapter 3 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the performance of notarial acts by a remote online notary public, and to further add a new Article 11 to Chapter 33 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the record of an electronic record, and to amend Section 33512 of Chapter 33 Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to criminal prosecution of a notary office, and to add a new Article 3 to Chapter 1 to Title 19 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to implementing rules for remote online notarization. And if I may discuss it, please.
On that motion, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 369 recognizes the longstanding need to modernize government operations in Guam. It does this by authorizing the practice of remote online notarization services. While Guam Public Law 33-15 authorized the use of electronic signatures and records in 2015, present notarizations must still be conducted in the physical presence of a notary public, even if the documents to be notarized are in electronic form. Bill 369 would update this by permitting an individual to appear before a notary public remotely via two-way audio and video communication. This would provide individuals a safe and secure alternative to traditional transactions involving a notarial act. This act has many multiple layers of protection. To protect against fraud, the bill adopts rules and regulations providing multiple layers of identity verification. These rules were based off of standards promoted by the Mortgage Bankers Association and the American Land Title Association. As a result, they include a requirement for presentation of photo ID, credential analysis, identity proofing, and a digital recording of an audio/video communication capturing the notarization of the documents. An online notary public must also require an individual to demonstrate that he or she is neither under duress nor being coerced to complete the transaction. The notary is further authorized to refuse to perform a notarial act if there are reasonable grounds to believe that an individual is acting under duress or undue influence. If this bill were to become law, Guam would join a growing list of states with remote notarization services on their books. Currently, there are 28 states that have authorized RON services, RON services, while several more have issued emergency executive orders in response to the COVID-19 crisis. For example, about a month after I introduced this measure, Governor Lou Leon Guerrero issued Executive Order Number 2025, which temporarily suspended the physical presence required of a notary for the duration of the public health emergency. But despite this temporary authorization, Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio wrote to the Speaker of the Legislature indicating the need to implement remote services on a permanent basis. This bill also has an authorization for electronic recording. The bill adds new language to authorize electronic recording and addresses situations in which a local record office may not have electronic recording capacity. As a result, the bill makes clear that any requirement for a document to be in paper or writing is satisfied by a paper copy of the electronic document. Similarly, if there is a requirement that the document be signed, the requirement is fulfilled by an electronic signature. Finally, a physical or electronic image of a stamp, impression, or seal is not needed to accompany an electronic signature if the notary has attached an electronic notarial certificate that meets the requirements of this act. I'd like to note from my colleague's reference that a document was uploaded into the session file drive, which outlines a summary of changes between this introduced bill and the bill that's amended. Many of the changes were technical, and they were proffered by the Attorney General's Office. And while the proposed rules and regs eliminates most of the legwork, the amended version further grants the Office of the Attorney General 45 days after enactment to address administrative provisions necessary to effectuate the bill. Modernizing Guam's notary act has always been necessary to keep up with the times, and I believe this recent pandemic has brightened the spotlight on the need for remote practices. This bill will enable parties to conduct important transactions without compromising the integrity of notarial acts or current social distancing requirements. More than anything, I want to note that it also has the resounding support and urging of the Attorney General's Office, the Guam Association of Realtors, and actually, the court systems, who are also experiencing difficulty in accepting documents because of challenges with notarial acts. So with that, I just would like to encourage my colleagues to please support this modernization effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone on the main motion? If not, Senator Mary, would you like to close?
I just, I just want to close with a resounding Sijus Massey, and I'd like to also move to allow legal counsel to make any technical or grammatical changes that she deems necessary. And I'd like to ask that you, Speaker, be added as a cosponsor to this measure.
Thank you, Senator Torres. On that motion, are... I was asked by Clerk to make it to two separate motions. So on the first motion to ask legal to make any technical corrections as necessary, are there any objections? Hearing none? Seeing none? Motion carries. And then to add a cosponsorship for Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. And then a motion to move it to...
Yes, and I move that this be, Bill 369-35COR be advanced to the third reading voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections? Was there a reconsideration?
I believe my colleague, my colleague would like to offer some words. So before you gavel down, may I please allow my esteemed colleague to speak?
You know what?
Are we out of order? That's okay.
No worries. Okay.
Disregard, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry to...
On the motion to, to the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. I do apologize, Senator Sinagastin. Colleagues, we are now on... Senator Mary Torres, if you may, can we just move to set aside 372-35 until the author comes back from her scheduled appointment, and then we'll go ahead and entertain Bill 360, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Senator Torres. Legislative Secretary, I apologize on behalf of Senator Lee. Can you please just set it aside until she gets back?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to set aside Bill 372-35 at this time.
Just to set it aside until the author comes back. On that motion, hearing or seeing, seeing no objection? Motion carries. Senator Mary Torres, you still have, you have the floor again. Bill 360-35COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number 360-35COR, which is an act to amend Chapter 73 of Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating a notice of arrival from all incoming vessels and aircraft to the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency prior to arrival at Guam's ports of entries, and to requiring the advance presentation of manifest information to the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency prior to arrival at Guam's ports of entry, and to further establishing penalties in violation of such requirements be placed on the third reading file. And if I may discuss it, please.
Senator Torres, yes, you may, but can you just go ahead and note it as, is it as substituted by the committee?
Yes, ma'am, and it is Bill Number 360-35COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing.
General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing.
Thank you. You may proceed, Senator Torres.
Thank you. As many are aware, proper manifesting is a standard requirement for vessel entry and for the issuance of a permit to unladen at ports of entry. The manifest document, which contains information regarding the vessel's cargo, passengers, and crew, is also a vital component of protecting against smuggling via containerized cargo. That is why the United States Customs and Border Protection presently requires the advanced presentation of this document. Under Title 19, Section 4.8 of the U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, vessels must submit their manifest no later than 48 hours prior to arrival in the United States. Under Guam law, however, a manifest does not have to be submitted to a customs officer until after the vessel has arrived, and this is per 5GCA. This requirement was enacted by the 13th Guam Legislature in the 1970s and has since not been updated to reflect technological advancements and current security concerns. These outdated requirements are concerning, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, because, as you know, the Customs and Quarantine Agency is our first line of defense on Guam, tasked with protecting our borders and securing our ports of entry. Over the past several years, the agency has reported an increasing number of drugs coming into the island, with over $64 million in ICE infiltrating Guam's ports of entry between 2012 and 2017 alone. While Guam lies outside of U.S. Customs jurisdiction, it's clear in my discussions with the agency that amending local laws so that it aligns with current federal requirements can aid those at our front lines. If enacted, Bill Number 360 would require an electronic submittal of the manifest as well as a separate notice of arrival from any aircraft, vessel, or contrivance 48 hours prior to arrival. Madam Speaker, I drafted this measure in consultation with the Customs and Quarantine officials as part of a series of ongoing proposals. As a result, it very clearly outlines what both the manifest and notice of arrival must contain. It further establishes civil and criminal penalties for those who violate these requirements or fail to comply. And I want to also, I failed to acknowledge that you, Madam Speaker, are a cosponsor with this, and you and I both have thought about what it would take to start curbing the drug infiltration into our islands. And I want to just acknowledge, you know, the very good work that you and I in our offices have done collaboratively with Customs and Quarantine, the Coast Guard, and the Governor's Office in trying to find the first level of correcting our laws so that we can shore up some of the requirements necessary to allow Customs and Quarantine to conduct risk assessments so that they can, you know, in terms of containerized, containers coming into Guam, and determine what are more subject for inspection. This bill also has the added advantage of ensuring that proper taxation of items coming into Guam is accounted for. And it also facilitates at the port in terms of the port's anticipation of what their cargo unlading is going to entail, and could possibly also, this bill could possibly also facilitate the clearance of containers out of the port. But most especially, aside from aligning with the Code of Federal Regulations in terms of advanced manifest importation, it's a modernization effort, too, that will alleviate the piles and piles of paper documentation that is currently the practice right now. So that is another advantage to 360. But I didn't want to end this opening without thanking you, Madam Speaker, for the effort, which I think is long overdue and will have a critical impact in curbing the drug and contrivan importation into Guam. Thank you, and I encourage all my colleagues to please come on board in full support of this measure as well.
Sisus Massey, Senator Mary Torres. On the main motion, Senator Teresa Loa, I'll recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think it's an excellent bill, and it's an excellent tool that's going to be available to Customs, and which we are hoping is going to aid them in their pursuit of stopping drugs at the border, and of course, collecting taxes, but first and foremost, stopping the drugs, Madam Speaker. And the requirement that, you know, all will submit these documents in advance will allow, as described, Customs to decide which are the high-risk cargo or flights or ships coming in, and which are the low-risk. They told us this is how they do it, that they determine risk based on what they have available to them. And so this gives them more information to help them in their determination of risk, because they admitted to us at some of our public hearings that they do not do 100% inspections of all cargo, for example. And I didn't know that prior to becoming a senator, so I was shocked. But the, so allowing them this additional information, of course, is going to help them in making, in making that determination as to, you know, where to prioritize the very, very limited resources that Customs actually has available to it right now. We went through the budget just recently, and unfortunately, it was a drastic reduction that Customs is facing for FY '21, and that is due to a drastic reduction in travelers, and they get their revenues from passenger fees. So the other side of this bill is that penalties are stated very clearly, and they hopefully can be enforced easily, and that penalties will also allow Customs to continue to do more. They testify, not at this hearing, but at previous hearings, that one of their more effective tools are these K-9 units, but that due to the lack of resources, they are, I think, down to one K-9 unit. I'm not sure how large a unit is, but, so they're definitely not able to conduct inspections at both places at the same time, or, you know, to... Anyways, it's a, I think we can all agree, because this is going to help them. It's going to help them to get revenue through penalties, through their own work in enforcing these laws, this new law, and that hopefully, they will be able to increase their inspections or be more effective in their inspections, increase the resources such as K-9 units, if that's what they need to be more effective. But ultimately, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill because it's going to help them to stop drugs at the border, and we very much want them to do that. We are relying on them to do that. We have been told over and over again by the Attorney General, past Attorney Generals, Chiefs of Police, that drugs being brought into Guam are the number-one source of all crime on Guam. And so, thank you very much to the authors of this bill, Sisus Massey.
Haga mas...
Madam Speaker, may I also just thank, you know, it looks, from the public hearing and the testimony that was submitted, and the substitute version of the bill, that there was significant work done also by, you know, those at Customs. They are the stakeholders. They are very much invested, and so they were very active in helping to get the language that we have today. So I just wanted to thank Chief Perez, Colonel Tyron, and the Director, Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Teresa. Senator Will Castro, I will acknowledge you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the measure. It makes good sense to know who and what's coming in and out of our ports of entry. As was previously stated, the manifests provide Customs agents information relative to the passengers, crew, and cargo aboard these transport vessels and other devices. By receiving the information in advance, Customs agents are in a much better position to allocate scarce resources to areas of higher risk, such as what was previously alluded to. One example was in terms of counterfeit goods of a certain maker type. Further, as Colonel Tyron's testimony states, and I couldn't agree more, the requirement to submit the manifest digitally further adds to our collective efforts to modernize the agency. With that said, Madam Speaker, I want to thank Chief Vince Perez, Colonel Philip Tyron, Officer John Rick Maniola for their persistence in advocating for the improvement and modernization of CQA. This is evident in the work in the last three, four years when I had the privilege to serve here, but also in the prior administration. But above all, in closing, I commend the sponsors, Senator Torres and Speaker Barnes. This is an excellent step forward towards strengthening the preparedness, response, and overall operations of our homeland's first line of defense, the Guam Customs and Quarantine. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to reaffirm my support of the measure. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Castro. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator Torres, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues, for expressing your support and sentiments about this bill. At this time, I'd like to add as a cosponsor, sponsor, Joe Sinagastin to the bill, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries.
I'd also like to move to allow legal counsel to make any grammatical or technical corrections that she seems...
Necessary.
Thank you, necessary.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Motion to...
And in closing, I just want to also acknowledge Ike Paredo, who really was the first person to jumpstart this project with us at the Legislature. Sisus Massey, sir, and with that, I move that this be placed on the third reading voting file.
Thank you, Senator Torres. On the motion to place Bill 360-35COR to the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. Sisus Massey, Senator, and Senator Mary Torres. Bill Number 151-35COR, Senator Clint Rigel, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we place Bill Number 151-35COR into the third reading file for discussion.
Sisus Massey, Senator Rigel, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, I do apologize. Just for the record, clerks has asked me to make sure we do the number, what committee, the author, and the title, please.
Excuse me, I apologize. So I move that we place Bill Number 151-35COR as introduced by myself, Clinton E. Rigel, into the third reading file for discussion.
Can you read the title, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, one moment. Introduced, okay, Bill 151-35COR, introduced by myself, Clinton E. Rigel, an act to create a new Chapter 2 to Title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to salary adjustments for employees appointed by boards and commissions of autonomous agencies of the government of Guam.
You may proceed on discussion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you. So Bill 151-35COR was really a bill that came about after questionable raises were made. Matter of fact, the raises were deemed illegal, and specifically, it came about from raises first that were made by the Consolidated Commission on Utilities for members of GWA and GPA management. The raises were deemed illegal, and this sparked a lot of controversy and a lot of discussion. And part of that discussion included some discussion I had with former Senator Robert Klitsky. Former Senator Klitsky actually came up with this idea and with this bill, and really, all this bill does is allow for more transparency. What this bill does is it allows, it requires that any border commission, before they implement a raise, that they submit those proposed salary adjustments to the Legislature before those salary adjustments take effect. It also requires that the Chair of the Border Commission certify that all aspects of the resolution approving the salary adjustments were discussed and adopted in a properly called-upon and noticed open and public meeting. And then the proposed salary adjustment would have to lay before the Legislature for 90 days before becoming effective. This 90-day period will allow for more transparency. It allows time for the Legislature and the public to review and weigh in on the proposed increases. So really, this is all in the spirit of open government and more accountability and more transparency. Specifically, the requirement for that certificate that the Chair of the Board has to certify that the resolution was adopted properly came about because of a member of the CCU, some members of the CCU who basically feigned ignorance when they were confronted with the adoption of those salaries. At the time, some comments were made by some of the members that they weren't aware, that they did anything wrong. They weren't aware of the pertinent laws. So this, in effect, would take away that argument from any future board member or Chair of a board, because they would have to certify that they met all aspects of adoption that are required by law in a properly called-upon and noticed open and public meeting. So that's really the reasoning behind the measure. It's just to call for more transparency and allow opportunity for the public to weigh in on it. And since the bill was actually introduced quite a while ago, it went through the process, had the public hearing, et cetera, and, but I think it's very timely now, considering that since then, again, like I said, the genesis really had to do with the CCU raises for GWA and GPA management. But since then, we've seen more boards and commissions come about with questionable raises. So I think this is very timely. I think this is something that the public would appreciate, and it's something that would, again, just allow for more transparency and more openness with regards to these raises. Thank you, Madam Speaker. With that, I do have an amendment I would like to proffer as well. Okay, Madam Speaker, my amendments are mostly technical in nature, or my amendment, excuse me, it's one amendment, it's just technical in nature. Really what it is, is a result of the legal review. This came about from the legal review, and these are recommendations made by our legal bureau. So if you would take a look at the amendment, it amends lines 6 through 14 of Page 1 and lines 1 through 5 of Page 2. It amends the bill in the salary adjustment section, instead of saying "lay before provision", it's crossed out to just call it legislative review. Now, it also adds in a sentence saying that by a border, so no salary adjustment for employees of autonomous agencies who are appointed by a border commission shall be effective until, then here's the amendment, it says, "A resolution supporting such salary adjustment and accompanying certificate of the chairperson of the border commission has transmitted to a legislature in Guam for 90 days prior to implementation of such salary adjustment." And in Section 2102, we just crossed out the word "the," added the word "a," and then also made a correction on the word "employees" and made it singular instead of plural, so for "any employee," and then added "of an autonomous agency," and then added the words "along with the accompanying certificate of the chairperson," crossed out "along with the certificate of the chair," and then also amended the section that discusses the contents of the certificate. We crossed out this section that explains what must be stated in the contents of the certificate, and instead put a new section, replace... certificate, and instead, put a new section, replace that contents of certificate section with a new section explaining the contents of certificate. Section 2103 that says, "A, the certificate of the chairperson shall be subscribed by him or her as true under penalty of perjury and dated in substantially the following form. One, if executed outside of Guam, quote, 'I certify under penalty of perjury under the laws of Guam that the foregoing is true and correct,' executed on, date, and signature. Two, if executed within Guam or within a state having a rule of law or procedure similar in effect to this section, quote, 'I certify under penalty of perjury that the foregoing is true and correct, executed on, date, and signature.' B, the certificate shall further state that the resolution providing for the salary adjustment was discussed and adopted in a properly called and noticed open and public meeting at which quorum was present and minutes were recorded." That's the amendment, Madam Speaker, and again, this was, these were all recommendations from our legal bureau.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Anyone on the Clint Rigel amendment? Are there any objections? Senator Kelly, you have the floor.
Sisus Massey. Perhaps, I'd like to have a minute to, of recess to confer with the author, because I do have an amendment, and it might be easier just to amend his amendment, because he's changing the entire section of the certificate. So, if I can have a moment's recess?
I will allow a moment's recess.
Iminetren Taisinkun, Lesletur in Guahan is back from recess. I understand you folks have met with Legal and worked things out. So Senator Marsh, you still have the floor?
So with that, I will do my amendment separately. And I don't have any questions for this amendment per se. Sutus Maasi, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Maasi, Senator Titino. On the Clint Rigel Amendment, are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, is there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Rigel, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no further amendments. Thank you.
Sutus Maasi, Senator Rigel. On the main motion, on the main motion, anyone wish to speak? Senator Marsh Titino, I will recognize you.
Sutus Maasi, Masca Halu. I do have a couple of questions for the author of the bill and two or three amendments to proffer.
Please state your question.
So I'd like to know what happens to board resolutions at this point in time? Part of this bill calls for the resolutions to be submitted to the legislature. And so I'm wondering if that's a standard happenstance for these resolutions? Or if this is calling for a new action?
Senator Clint, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. I'll yield to the question. No, this would be a new requirement. Right now, they're not required to submit any kind of resolution to the legislature with regards to salary adjustments.
Senator Titino?
Hungen, so that's very helpful to know. I was not entirely clear on that. And then the other question is, some of the discussion was about potentially affecting the bond ratings. And I'd like to know if there was any further inquiries into this or discussion with GIDEA or the Bond Council to assure us about whether it does or does not affect bond ratings?
Senator Clint?
No, not that I'm aware of. I haven't received anything from anyone saying if it affects bond ratings or not.
Thank you. Senator Titino?
Sutus Maasi for the response. So with this bill, especially as has been mentioned, given that there have been difficulties and sections or, excuse me, actions that seem to need some sort of additional guidance or additional reassurance or additional transparency. I do support this bill. And I do have a few amendments because I think there are a couple of areas that we can make stronger. So in the folder for the bill, there is one for line 12, page 1. That's the first one in the lineup that I can start with. This is line 12, page 1. To amend the bill to read, subsection 2102, saying, procedure. The resolution providing for salary adjustment for any employees appointed by a board or commission shall upon adoption be transmitted to the Speaker of Il Lesletur in Guahan. And I've added in here and the Chair of the Legislative Committee that has oversight of the Board or Commission. And then it continues on with the original language, along with the certificate of the Chair. No later than, and I am resubmitting this to state 60 days. I discussed this with the author and other senators, and we compromised before Il Lesletura adjourns sindai. So for those two adjustments, the first one is that we all know that we get quite a bit of information being sent to the legislature on a daily basis. And the intent of this bill is to make sure that everyone sees it, yes. So that is done by the legislature. But we also want to guarantee that the Chair of the Oversight absolutely is, it's clear that this action has occurred and this is being transmitted. So I wanted to provide that assurance that the Chair will absolutely know immediately upon submission because they will get their own copy. So that seemed important to me. And then the review can commence after that. The other part is, in looking at the 90 days, in the committee report and at the public hearing, there was some discussion in the testimony about the fact that some of these agencies and entities, they're dealing with bonds, they're dealing with grants and so forth. And so just to provide a little bit more flexibility, we want enough time for the committee to be able to conduct any hearing or informational briefing or any research, but to as much as possible not interfere unnecessarily with any grants, grant reporting, grant budgeting, or something that might need to be taken care of. So we came up with a compromise. I started with 30, it started with 90. And there were at least three of us senators that agreed that 60 days should be enough time to meet both of those intentions.
Yeah, thank you. But Senator Titino, if you may, if you may please, if you can say and ask, based on that, because amendments were made earlier, have legal counsel make the necessary technical corrections on this amendment.
Hungen.
If it passes.
And so. Yes, I would also like to make sure that Legal has the authority to make any technical corrections necessary.
Okay. On that amendment, Senator Tello, Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Sutus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon, my colleagues. You know, I appreciate the amendment that was proffered by the Senator of Nimidso. And coming to a consensus on the, from 90 days, 30 days, and going to a more reasonable 60 days. In fact, I brought it up during the public hearing about the 60 days. Why not 60 days? And I don't think there was any pushback. But the good author of the bill actually made a lot of sense when he mentioned that, you know, it's like the AAA process, you know, moving forward. And it gives enough time. And even this afternoon, he mentions that sometimes it's hard for a senator to get calendar dates in for public hearings. So I think the 60-day rule is a good amendment to the bill. However, I do have a question to the, I guess I will proffer this one directly to, yeah, the author of the amendment to the bill, if she should so yield to a question that I have.
Thank you. Please state your question. Thank you.
Okay. When it says that transmitted to the Speaker of Lesletur in Guahan and the Chair of the Legislative Committee, these are definitely areas, and it's common practice that certain information and anything that's coming with notifications and stuff go to the Speaker. And of course, because the Oversight Chair. But I don't think that the language for the committee that has Oversight Chair of Board or Commission, I think that the Oversight is the Oversight of the agency more so than the Board or Commission. And that's just a question I have. I think that is in question, that instead of Board or Commission, it should say Agency. You know, the agency in question. And then the other one is, I wanted to ask, so that question, I'm sorry to make it twofold. Maybe you can combine it. And the other one was, when you see Speaker of Lesletur in Guahan, does that require the Speaker to also submit to all senators in the legislature? I believe every one of us takes a keen eye to what's going with all the agencies, regardless if we're not Oversight Chairs or even the member of that committee. But we all have a due diligence to look at all agencies, which is very taxing, but it's a job we all agree to do. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Senator Kelly, would you like to yield to those questions?
Hungen. Yes, I can check with Legal real quick. You know, because we were talking about certification from the Board or Commission, we went with that language. But I can see that Agency is perhaps the more appropriate reference. But I will defer to Legal. So I'm happy to get that correct because we want it to be as clear as possible. The other is, as I had mentioned in my opening statement, that yes, when information is provided to the Speaker, it is disseminated to all of us. But there can be an overwhelming amount of information to sort through. And I think it's appropriate, on one hand, to make that agency and that board responsible to that Chair, but also just to make sure that there is no possibility or as little possibility as possible that it might be missed in the deluge of communications that we get every day. So I just want to create that reassurance. But also, I do think it's appropriate that there is direct communication between the agencies and the boards and their Oversight Chair, especially with something as important as a salary increase or many salaries that are to be increased. So I do think that that's important information that they convey directly to their Oversight Chair, who we want specifically to look at this information because they would be the one to call any roundtable or hearing or conduct any research. But it is also a good point that we should all be examining this information and have our ears and eyes open.
Thank you. Senator Tello?
I believe she would be seeking legal advice at this point, just to ensure that the language is correct.
So do you want to ask for a moment's recess to get the answer from her? So do you want to ask for a moment's recess to get the answer from her?
Yes, if that's okay.
I will take a moment's recess. Ymina Tretasinko, Nalahesla Turanguahan is back from recess. It's about 4:10. Senator Kelly Marsh Taitino, there was a, there was a question. Would you like to yield or do you have an answer from legal?
Hungen. So the answer is, is that either could work, but upon looking at the rest of the bill for consistency, it is a little bit cleaner to state autonomous agencies. So what I'd like to do is withdraw this amendment, and I've come up with a cleaner amendment that incorporates that recommendation along with others.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to withdraw the amendment by Senator Taitino, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none. Motion carries. I will go back and give you the floor, Senator Marsh Taitino, for your amendment.
Sutus Massey, maska hulu. So the amendment is now the one that says lines nine through 12, page 1. And what I've been able to do is incorporate two amendments into one. So this will take care of them in an efficient manner, hopefully. And as previously discussed, this amendment has a couple of amendments. So it's to amend the bill to read and it's subsection 2101. For salary adjustment and legislative review, that no salary adjustment for employees of autonomous agencies who are appointed by a Board or Commission shall be effective until a resolution supporting such salary adjustment and accompanying certificate of the Chairperson of the Board or Commission has transmitted to Ilahesla Turanguahan for, and it changes from 90 days to 60 days as the compromise that was previously discussed prior to the implementation prior to the implementation of such salary adjustment. Then it goes on to subsection 2102, same procedure. "A resolution providing for a salary adjustment for any employee of an autonomous agency appointed by a board or commission along with the accompanying certificate of the chairperson shall upon adoption be transmitted to the Speaker of Ilahesla Turanguahan, and this is adding in language, the Chair of the Legislative Committee that has oversight of the autonomous agency, no later than..." It crosses out 90 and continues with the same consistent 60 days before Ilahesla Turanguahan adjourns sin dai.
Thank you, Senator Taitino. On the amendment, are there any one wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Marsh is to have the floor, Assistant Majority Leader.
So, Madam Speaker. And this next amendment, it does still use the older language before it was amended by a previous senator, but Legal has said that they can make the technical correction to place it in the proper place. This amendment is line five, page two. "To amend the bill to read, the certificate must state that the resolution providing for the salary adjustment was discussed and adopted in a properly called and noticed open and public meeting, a quorum being present and minutes being recorded." So this amendment adds in that the certificate must also state that the audio or video recording of said meeting was submitted or will be submitted to the Office of Public Accountability within seven calendar days after said meeting. So I wanted to add this part in because if we're wanting to make sure that the meeting is truly following open government law, then the minutes need to be recorded, the minutes need to be submitted, there needs to be an audio recording, and that audio recording needs to be submitted to the Office of Public Accountability within seven calendar days for all conditions to be met and for the decision to hold. So I just wanted to add in that extra assurance that they have met all of those criteria. So, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitino. On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Tadegui, Minority Leader, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On this particular amendment, I'm trying to find the location. I understand that certain certificate which... First, I would like to know where the definition of certificate, what exactly is certificate.
Would you like to yield that to the author or to the person proffering the amendment?
Either or is fine, but...
Senator Clint or Senator Marsh, would you, either of you like to yield to the question?
I yield to the author of the bill.
I'm sorry, what was the question again, Madam Speaker?
The definition of certificate in this bill.
Madam Speaker, if I can just take one minute. I know it's kind of big on this, so...
A moment's recess.
I'm going to go ahead and address the minority leader this time. Minority leader, I understand you were working with legal. Please proceed.
Sijis Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also ask for the definition of the certificate. And the author of the legislation, actually in the section of 213, had crossed out the concern of the definition of certificate pursuant to 4308, which is a penalty of perjury section in the Guam Code annotated. However, he incorporated the back in through his amendment content of a certificate explaining what the certificate entails. So my question was answered during the recess, and I thank you for the opportunity for that recess. And while during recess, I was able to work with legal on making an amendment to the amendment of the good senator from Nimitz Hill, which if you find on the Google Drive, Madam Speaker. And of course, this is an amendment to the amendment. It's on line five, page two. And it's just after the good speaker's amendment, seven days after said meeting, seven calendar days after said meeting, where my amendment will be, is asked to be incorporated, which is the performance, the completed performance evaluation serving as the basis for the salary adjustment shall be attached to the certificate. And the reason why this amendment is made is to make it clear, Madam Speaker, that though certain requirements like the resolution, which was, will be adopted and voted on by the board, that they also include the evaluation itself, where it determined their status, whether they were satisfactory, whether they were, you know, unsatisfactory. It gives us the opportunity to look at that performance evaluation ourselves. So that's what my amendment will do.
Thank you, Minority Leader. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Senator Clint, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no problem with the amendment. I support the amendment. It just again ensures that they submit all this information to us and also ensures that they're following all the rules with regards to salary adjustments. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator, thank you, Minority Leader. On the amendment as amended by Senator Taitino, I'll give you the floor.
Sijis Massey, Masca Hulu. So the one thing as closing, I think we've made the case pretty well, is just to make sure that there's that motion to have legal make any technical corrections, as is necessary as part of this amendment.
Okay, I'll work that as a motion right now. On that motion for technical corrections, if necessary, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Taitino, you still have the floor on the amended amendment.
I'm finished speaking on the amendment and yeah, we can move on. Sijis Massey.
On the Kelly Marsh, Taitino amendment as amended, are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. On the main motion, anybody on the main motion? Senator Therese, I'll recognize you this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill. And you know, in truth, we may not be able to impact the salaries of autonomous directors. It's not that clear from the bill, because the bill just is putting it in front of the legislature for review. However, I want to acknowledge that, you know, how government employees feel and how private sector employees must feel when they hear about raises, especially for directors who are unclassified. And even though, you know, they may have performance evaluations, they may be well deserved. I'm, I think the feelings are, they're still there. It's just very hard, because we know that classified raises really are few and far between, except for their regular merit bonuses and increments that are provided by law for only classified employees. I don't think the line directors are getting these increments. At least, I'm not aware of that at this point. But it's really autonomous agencies that we are talking about here. And they always come back to us and say that, you know, we can't interfere with their salary structures and their board dealings because of bond covenants. But that's what I'm saying, it remains to be seen. However, I just want to acknowledge that no one feels good to hear that news, especially after the fact. So what I like about the bill is that it gives us some notice. Well, it's after the resolution's passed by a board. But you know, we already know that directors are getting paid more than most of the employees, or generally, I would say. There are some exceptions, but generally, directors are getting paid than anyone else in the agencies. And sometimes, not all boards, but sometimes, they, they look a lot like political appointees, despite being approved by the boards. And that these autonomous agencies have a different pay scale than our regular line agencies, even not just for their unclassified, but also some of their classified employees. The auditor pointed out that at some of the agencies, these directors received increments and maybe rightly so, pursuant to that agency's policies. They would receive increment. They would be in an agency for many years. And so by the time they left that position, their salary had changed significantly. But the problem that he pointed out was that then comes in a new director, and they start out at the highest salary of the previous director, not at the lower starting level salaries, but at the higher ones. And, and that's another issue that's just not resolved by this bill. But, but I think it adds to that, you know, immediate reaction of most line agency classified workers or private workers, even before the pandemic, those who had jobs. I can imagine the ones that don't have jobs at this point and how they feel, because it's, it's just not something you want to hear, that while you're unemployed or you're struggling to make a living, you have to work three jobs, that there are agency heads who are already highly paid, getting raises. It's, it's never gonna sit well until we can rectify salaries across the board. But that's one of the audit points that was also made is that, yeah, we're starting them out sometimes to, you know, much, just not equitable, too high. But I think what this bill points out to us is, is that we really should know in advance of these types of actions. And our open government law was supposed to do that for us. It was supposed to tell us when the boards were going to meet and what action these boards were going to take. Unfortunately, we might know when the boards are going to meet, but it is sometimes very difficult, even for me, even up to now, to determine what are they going to act on. I've asked agency after agency, what is your agenda for these meetings? And sometimes, they've not made their agenda until like hours or even an hour before the meeting. And I don't think that is compliant with the spirit of the open government law. And so I just think we need to, in a separate piece of legislation, that I'll take a look at, but to require that when we say, put out a notice regarding your meeting, you put out a notice regarding what action you intend to take at that meeting, and in particular, raises. I think it's very clear. That way, the community will know in advance. They can ask questions of the board. They can object if they want before the action is taken. And I think that is, that is maybe a more satisfactory remedy than just being told after the fact and, you know, we either accept it or, or not. That's, that's, nobody likes that, Madam Speaker. But so I think that they should publish it in advance and be able to justify it in advance. But anyways, otherwise, I support, I support the bill even and with the amendments. And thank the sponsor for the bill. Sijis Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Therese. Anyone else on the main motion? Minority Leader? I will recognize you.
Sijis Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the bill itself. I'm happy that these amendments that were proffered went through. I think it's going to strengthen the bill also. Any concerns that, that were proffered earlier and during the public hearing has been addressed. You know, Madam Speaker, during the public hearing, there had been several agencies that testified. And one agency, I think it was a public defender's office, you know, citing certain Guam Code annotated sections that talk about the evaluation. So of course, reading through it, the board, and it says here in chapter, well, actually in Guam Code, title five, section 43202, where it talks about performance reviews and agency heads. And it in here, it explains that the chief executive selected to the agency, there shall be a six months after the appointment, an evaluation, and thereafter, every 12 months. It explains all the evaluations. It not only does that, but it also explains that the, the board's meetings, how they're conducted. And when an executive board meeting is to be conducted and how the process is to be done that way. But in this whole entire chapter that I was reading, there's nothing in here indicating that it's a requirement to give that individual a raise or an increase. to give that individual a raise or an increase. And I hope that board members see that too, that just because you have to, you do an evaluation that you have to do, that it is by law, it doesn't mean they need to get a raise. You know, the previous speaker was talking about some of the concerns. And I, and I'm hoping that maybe later on, legislation be created to even strengthen this piece of legislation. There was another, in some incidences where, where you're looking at evaluations, even though they have an evaluation, some salaries are by statute, like the public defender's office. That is already, you know, grained in by statute. So there's really no change in salary on that one. But places like the Guam Economic Development Authority, they had no problem with this legislation at all. They were there. They try and comply. I think what the problem is on some of these agencies, autonomous agencies, is they just don't put up in their website fast enough the minutes of the meeting or the board meeting. Sometimes it takes them a month before they put those minutes up for the public to see. And this is all about transparency. Then it was brought up that certain agencies that have federal funding, that we have to be careful. I think we're being very careful, but not only careful, but transparent. And that's what the federal government expects of us. But there's nothing in the law that says that they're exempt because they receive federal funding. Nothing in the law. In fact, those agencies that receive federal funding is actually explicit in the law, calling them out by name. Port Authority, Tramura Affairs, Guam Memorial Hospital, Guam Telecommunications Corporation, they're all here. Madam Speaker, there was also a testimony by Department of Waterworks, GWA, talking about the bonds and the issues with bonds. They say, and I quote, "GWA is concerned that there is a potential for greater physical impact, although indirect, by a negative change in the bond ratings or investor confidence resulting from predeceives legislation interference with utility operations as it relates to existing bond indentures." You know, it's a may, and it's, it's not clear. Although indirect, it could be, maybe. I mean, every time when we want these agents to be transparent, they throw the organic act on us, they throw bonds on us, or covenants, bond covenants. This does nothing to hurt that at all. And I would love to sit and argue with GWA on it because it would not hurt at all. This is about giving a director a raise. And again, in Guam Code annotated, title five, 43202, there's nothing in there indicating that we have to give them a raise, but we do have to evaluate them. So Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I stand in full support of this legislation and hope that maybe we can further this in other legislations that will actually give it more teeth. And I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Sujus Masih, Minority Leader. On the main motion, are there anyone else? If not, Senator Clinton, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to my colleagues for the discussion. And I agree with a lot of the previous speakers. On the issue of bond covenants, I know it's been kind of raised and, and it always seems to be an issue that they raise. But, you know, let's, let's be frank here. A bond covenant is really made, it's an agreement between the bondholder and the bond issuer, right? And really, it's to protect a lot of times the bondholders. I don't think any bondholders would be concerned if someone was not given a raise. So I don't think, if I held a bond, I don't think that would affect me at all. I don't think I would be concerned that an agency did not give their general manager a raise. I don't think that would make me have any concerns about my investment in the bond. Bondholders are more concerned about whether or not the agency is solvent or not and whether or not they're able to actually make the money that they need to be able to pay back the bonds. And if you're giving out raises, in theory, you have less money to be able to pay back bonds, right? So I don't buy that argument at all first, first off the bat. And secondly, I also don't buy the argument because nothing in this legislation allows us to prevent, to actually prevent them from giving raises. It doesn't give us the option of approval or disapproval of raises. All this legislation does is add another level of transparency by having this, having proposed salary adjustments be sent to us so that the public can see it, can weigh in it, so we can see it, so the Legislative Oversight Chair can see it and weigh in on it and ensure that the raises were done pursuant to the law. So that's all this bill really does, does not give us authority to approve or disapprove raises. So there's no way that it should impact any bond covenants. So with that, I'd like to thank my colleagues for the amendments they've added to the bill. And I'd like to thank former Senator Bob Klitsky for proposing the measure. And thank everyone for their discussion. And again, this bill is just in the spirit of open government and accountability. And I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Can you move it, Senator?
With that, I motion to place
151
Bill 151-35COR as amended on the floor into the voting file.
On that motion to place 151-35COR into the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, we have two more bills on the agenda, and it's 5:20. We can tackle one or two of both of them today, or we can... Senator San Augustine, I'll recognize you.
Madam Speaker, I motion that we recess until tomorrow, 10 o'clock, and continue the remaining two bills.
On that motion without a, Senator, Senator?
Motion be for 9:30?
On the motion to recess till 9:30, are there any objections? Seeing none, we are in recess till 9:30 a.m. Have a safe evening.